Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Monday, November 17th, West Fargo City Commission meeting. We welcome you. Before we call the meeting to order, I'd ask that everybody in the room please silence your phones except for first responders. With that, we call the meeting to order. Please join the commission on a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please call a roll?
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Dardis.
Here.
Commissioner Zundell.
Here.
Commissioners Jorgensen.
Here.
Let the record show that all Commissioners are present. Commissioner Olson is joining us via Zoom. Next order of business is to approve the Order of the Agenda. Commissioners, it has been distributed and in your packets.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Jorgensen moves to approve. Commissioner Anderson seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson, for clarification, did you vote to approve the Order of the Agenda? Did I just rush through it too fast?
Yes, I voted to approve the Agenda.
Thank you, sir.
I'm coming from the northwest part of the state, so it may take a little while for my transmission to get there.
I'll slow down, I promise. Next order of business is to approve the minutes of November 3rd. They have been distributed and are in your packets.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Zundell moves to approve the minutes of November 3rd as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Jorgensen seconds. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of November 3rd as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Building permits. The building permits has been distributed and in your packets, Commissioners.
Move to approve.
Commissioners Zundell moves to approve the building permits of November 17th as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson seconds. We have a motion and a second to approve the building permits of November 17th as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next order of business is a consent agenda. We have items A through E on a consent agenda. Move to approve. Mr. Anderson moves to approve the consent agenda, items A through E. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Zundell seconds. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, A through E as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. At this time, we are now in the regular agenda. Item number one on the regular agenda is public comment. We have four individuals that have signed up for public comment this evening. I'm going to just call them off as they were presented to me and handed to me in no particular order. This is the way it was given to me. First person to speak this evening is Joanne Almond. Joanne?
I see.
This microphone, please. Yes, ma'am. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you so kindly for allowing our neighborhood to present our concerns regarding Project 6060 Riverbend Path. I represent Dahl Subdivision, the neighborhood on the north side of the proposed path. We are not in favor of the path. This includes the homeowners, condo association, and owners of kinder care. We have numerous concerns, including cost, safety, negative effect on the neighborhoods in the area, and the environmental impact. I'm going to mainly address environmental impact. I walked the proposed path and saw the mainly box elder and cottonwood trees already marked for destruction. 150 trees, some likely over 100 years old. This is a significant destruction of the tree canopy that serves as a large nesting area for eagles, hawks, falcons, and other birds. Per Federal Migratory Bird Treaty Act, a bird survey needs to be done within five days of demolition, and if active nests are found, you need to detour 100 feet away. This could result in a zigzag path and increased cost. They will replant trees, but I quote, "realize this will be with four-inch twigs." It will take 30 years before these trees can serve the environment like the ones taken down. The construction will also displace deer, fox, coyotes, and river otters. Living in this area, we know it will be very difficult to keep the path open in the winter as it fills in with snow, so you will likely have a tunnel and then in the spring, a flooded path. There are other options that would be cheaper, have no negative effect on the environment, and involve no tree destruction such as beaten drive. Please look beyond the sales pitch you're being given on this $2 million, half a mile-long path, and as city commissioners, I encourage you to be good stewards of West Fargo's environment, finances, and neighborhoods. This path is not wanted, safe, needed, or environmentally friendly. Thank you so kindly.
Thank you, Ms. Almond. Next person that I have on the list is Ryan Haas. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. It's nice to put a face and a name together for a change. I've lived in West Fargo for eight years, and I live at 2325 Riversbend Drive, which is right across the street from the proposed bridge. My biggest concern that has not had a lot of emphasis on in the meetings that we've had is the lack of, the loss of all these trees. Now, some of the trees we've talked about have probably been there, like we just mentioned, over 100 years. If there's oak trees involved in this, and I have not taken a census, they could be 250 years old. So just randomly taking a path through this, you know, even the underbrush is providing future generations with trees. Nature has a way of replenishing itself, and this is our urban forest. West Fargo really doesn't have an urban forest, other than maybe Rondin Blue Park has a lot of trees and, you know, is user-friendly for all the things mentioned, habitat, and holding the bank, and whatever else you can think of recreational purposes. I just think that there's better ways, because if we get rid of the existing trees, that's fine. That takes care of what we enjoyed as a generation, but the next generation is seedlings and suckers coming up out of the ground that will be the next 100-year-old trees 50 years from now, 75 years from now, for our kids and grandkids. So I think in the impact of the bridge itself, I don't think it's going to provide that much interest versus planting more trees and people enjoying the existing paths, plant more trees around the paths that are existing. The Riversbend area has an overabundance, or not overabundance, but a lot of walking paths, and it's very user-friendly, so we enjoy that. And if we enhance those paths a little more, it wouldn't be such a harm on the riverbank itself, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. The next individual is Mr. David Withy. Good evening and welcome.
David Withy, 2421 Cloud Drive East. I too am here to talk about this Project 6060 Multi-Use Path. Frankly, I don't understand why it's on the agenda, because the purpose behind it keeps changing. First, we were told it was needed to help students get to Freedom Elementary School, except the students on the other side of the river go to Brooks Harbor, not to Freedom. Then we were told it's needed to help make certain that people can access the businesses more easily among veterans. But West Fargo 2.0 says that people will walk maybe a quarter of a mile to their destination, and this would be a lot more than a quarter of a mile from the other side of the river. So then we're just making a bike path. But I gotta be honest with you, there are a lot of people closer to Costco and other stores that could ride their bikes there, but they don't. I don't see bikes being used currently, but people could do that. So then we were told, well, really, this is a project that's part of West Fargo 2.0. Well, you know, everything about it is exactly opposite of what West Fargo 2.0 asked for. West Fargo 2.0 says, protect our canopy and grow it from 2.7% in 2018 up to 20% in 2030. Right now, we're at about 7.4%. That was from our last Forest Street Department report from '22, and cutting down 150 trees doesn't help us grow our canopy. It also says that we need to protect our wildlife and wildlife habitat. Well, you know, it also tells us to protect our riverside and wetland territory. Well, you put a path in there, what you're doing is you're disrupting that habitat dramatically in one of the few areas where we do have wildlife. So this path goes against everything we're being asked to do, and there's no actual plan for replacement trees. We asked about what happens when you cut down all these trees. We were told, well, there's a requirement for us to plant trees for every one that we cut down. Well, it's not really a requirement. It's a plan, it's just a standard industry practice. I'm willing to wager that this was never really planned for, to plant 300 trees until maybe we just brought it up recently at the Rust Ed meeting. Then we were told, well, you know, it's not really West Fargo 2.0, it's actually the 2016 MetroCog Bike Plan that's really behind this. Well, statistically speaking, there was no real West Fargo representation in any of that discussion. There were four open houses, and none of them were in West Fargo. There was a survey, but not a relevant number of people responded to the survey, but they, when they hadn't used it anyways, number of people from West Fargo, there were only 21 people who responded to that survey. That's not a relevant number either, statistically speaking. Should have been at least 46, preferably 56. So they still gave us a list of 23 projects for West Fargo. Only eight of those projects were actually presented to any group of people to vote on. Only two of them received votes. We don't know where the other 15 projects came from, or who put them on the list, but it wasn't West Fargo citizens. Now we're being told what we need is another connection between Cheyenne and Veterans/9th, because 17th to 32nd is too long of a distance. I can understand that, but there's a better option just a quarter mile away, on Beaton. It turns out, that was one of the two projects that actually got votes on that MetroCog study that was done nine years ago, eight years ago. So we got votes, but that's not on the project list until 2027. Why don't we just protect our nature, protect our wildlife, protect our canopy by just not doing this one and doing Beaton, because we really don't need two of them, just a quarter mile away. And Beaton already has safe, crosswalks and a traffic light on the western side. 6060 doesn't have anything safe on that side. I have a handout. Can I give it to you?
Certainly.
Thank you for your time.
To the secretary, please. To the secretary. She'll get it to us. Thank you. The next speaker that we have on the list is Pat Balmor. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Yes, my name's Pat Balmor. My wife and I live at 2334 Riversbend Drive. Our property is immediately adjacent to not only the path, but also the proposed bridge, so we're uniquely concerned about the project, as you can imagine. I've been in leadership positions before. I try to be pragmatic about these type of things when I see it. If I would have had somebody come to me with almost a $2 million ask, I'd be asking a lot of questions. As David mentioned and others, this really stems back from a study 10 years ago. A lot has changed at that point. In fact, most of Riversbend wasn't even developed at that time, and like I said, a lot of things have changed. I'm really trying to figure out what problem are we trying to solve here? It seems like it's connectivity. We have connectivity with 32nd and possibly Beaton in the future. I'm probably on the most northernmost part of Riversbend. My wife and I routinely walk over to 32nd Avenue and over to the lights, and if an old guy like I can, like me, can do that, I think our connectivity and our access to commercial districts is just fine. We'd love the path, have no problem. If it's, the commission is bent on doing something to the west, there's already a multi-use path that runs on the south end of Riversbend, and it stops and goes north on the Lowberg Trail, which is a nature trail, which is wonderful, not proposing anything to change there. But simply where that cement ends, it's a short chaunt to the river. You could put a bridge there, and then it's right over 29th Street, which, or 29th Avenue, which has a fully completed intersection with crosswalks. These type of projects, what comes up is really, in my mind, the law of unintended consequences, and a lot of this stuff I don't believe has been thought about. You're developing a secluded path down along the river. I feel like it'd be remiss if you don't have conversations with other cities like Fargo. They have a lot of problems in those areas. I have personal knowledge of those with friends that have used those areas. Has a comprehensive risk assessment been done? Things that come to my mind are the mitigation of the high-risk bikes. It'll be a racetrack back there. The kids that I've talked to that have bikes, they've now bypassed their speed limiters, and they got them to go as high as 45 and 60 miles an hour. What comes to my mind, what's the plan for emergency access in that back area? Is it going to be routinely patrolled? Those type of things. And then moving west, we're sending people right out to a six-lane highway or street, which is very busy. As far as the destruction of the woods, we were taken out by the FM diversion. When we decided to build in West Fargo, we're looking for a wooded lot with privacy. We have it. Now, with the proposed bridge, we'll be actually looking back largely, especially this time of year, at a bridge that expanses the Cheyenne. That'll be our view that we'll be looking at instead of what we thought we were getting. So I just wanted you to consider some of my comments, and I would urge a no vote on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That is all the folks that we had signed up for public comment this evening. So with that, public comment is closed. We move on to item number two on the regular agenda. The right, number two is the public hearings, and none of the items that we have before us this evening are mandated by a century code that we have a public hearing. So we move on to item number three. Item number three is the West 94 Area Transportation Plan. Plan, presentation, and approval. We're going to call on Aaron Nelson, the Director of Planning and Zoning, and Mr. Mike Bitner of Bolton Mink, and Dan Farnsworth of MetroCog. Gentlemen, good evening. Welcome.
Thank you and good evening.
I got all the names right? We got the, the names that are on here are the gentlemen that are here?
That's correct.
Good. Well, welcome. Please.
So I'm just here to give a quick introduction and a little context. So item three is a presentation of the West 94 Area Transportation Plan. Accompanying this presentation tonight is a request for approval of a resolution of support, which is included in your packet. So in terms of context here, this transportation plan was originally initiated by the city of West Fargo and MetroCog a couple of years back in order to plan for transportation needs in advance of the completion of the FM diversion project and associated development pressures that are anticipated along with that. The plan, or the plan itself focuses on two main things. One is the potential for future interchanges along I-94. The other is the future transportation network and infrastructure necessary to accommodate future development within the specific study area, which will be included in the slide deck shortly. The results of this plan, along with other previously completed transportation plans, are intended to inform the transportation component of the city's growth area master planning effort, which is currently underway. So just wanted to provide that little bit of context. So with that, again, here tonight, Mike Bitner, I think, is going to be given the bulk of the presentation. Mike Bitner is the project manager with Bolton and Mink, who completed this project. Also, Dan Farnsworth with MetroCog, MetroCog's project manager for this project. So all three of us and others in the audience here, including Dan in engineering, are available for questions as well. So with that, I'll hand it off.
Thank you. Mayor Commissioners. I just want to start by giving a kudos to city staff, some of the best in the business that I've had the pleasure to work with. Great leadership and guidance throughout this entire process. So I'm gonna start by focusing here. Get this mouse working.
I can touch the floor.
Okay.
I'm wondering if that clicker over there will work.
Is it this thing? Okay. I'll just give you a point if that works, okay? All right, so on the screen, you can see our study area in yellow. And so a couple of the key themes that really go into this overall process is really that the Red River diversion is really the lifeblood that breathes potential into this area, but it's also kind of the primary reason why we can't access this from a transportation perspective. It basically severs all ties, and we know that we don't want to move traffic through Brooks Harbor, where we already have land use and traffic conflicts. The third theme we had to go through as through this process is that the North Dakota Department of Transportation has rigorous requirements and firm preferences on access spacing on I-94. So to be able to fully unlock this area really took a lot of transportation, finesse, and analysis. Next slide, please. So the overall intent is threefold: understand growth potential, uncover potential barriers, whether that be through DOT stakeholders and the public at large, roadmap next steps, which is where we'll finish the presentation, but then also just to understand that this this plan is not a final referendum on land use, access, and overall investment. It really is designed to be analysis to guide your next couple steps. And so you're going to see some concepts in here that are going to feel fully formed, but they really are just the first step in the right direction. So why is early planning so important? You can really see the change, and you're all very well familiar with, what West Fargo looked like south of I-94. And so it really is important that we start to think about the overall potential, but also start to evaluate what those potential barriers are, so that we can learn from the things we would love to do a little bit differently in terms of getting infrastructure out there first. We started with a variety of growth assumptions, and one of our key goals was to provide better access to commercial land use in this area. Not only does this provide better tax sharing as you start to pay for the infrastructure, but it also provides a bit more harmonious land uses. And so we've got our, where people work and live, a little bit more closely connected than some of the neighborhoods we have across the region. And again, this is really just supposed to be a basis of analysis. The West Fargo Growth Plan is really designed to come through and refine the land use assumptions. So here's a conceptual vision on the left and of land use potential and how everything kind of interconnects into the future of the two and a half square miles. On the right, you can see the roadway infrastructure connected in and throughout that process. And so you can really see the marriage between land use and transportation through these two graphics. And so it's really important as you start to think about the different types of uses for roads, how that interplays with the land use. And so a great comment we got at the public input was, well, we don't want all of our schools to belong in arterial. And so by being able to establish where the roads go first, you can start to make sure that your land use doesn't conflict in that manner in the future. So we take all that land use information, we input it into MetroCog's travel-demand model, which is a big traffic model that connects where people live and where people work through the year 2050. And so on that graphic, you can start to see growth projections that range anywhere from about 10,000, so something similar to what you see on 9th Street north of 13th Avenue, all the way up to some traffic volumes near I-94, similar to Veterans Boulevard or even 45th Street. So dialing into a couple of the key locations from the plan, we call our first kind of the road in the middle, our central spine, it's not an avenue, it's not a street, but it really bisects everything that's going to happen through this area. And really, the vision for this was something foundational, versatile, and memorable, to be the signature road that connects all the different elements of this this plan together. So what we did is we developed a palette of potential alternatives that developers, as they come in, based on their adjacent land use and their transportation demand, can pick between a variety of different approved options. Another key component is Christiansen Drive. As you can see on the right side of the screen, the connectivity of adding a new connection over the Cheyenne diversion for all modes of travel, and then interconnecting all of our trails and different turning lanes and elements to this area as well. And so this will be an important element as you start to think about any short-term growth, as you're going to find some of the bigger elements are going to take a while to start to get developed. If we were to look at our only interstate access that we'd have without the Christiansen Drive connection would be all the way west at 38th Street and I-29, which is really the western termini of this overall area. And this will be an important interchange at some point, particularly as you think about the northwest part of West Fargo and Fargo, which is expected to have a lot of growth. But this really was not determined to be a feasible solution to access West 94 as its sole access point, both from the lack of ability to move all the traffic, but also just all the way to the west can be pretty inconvenient. So we started to look at some new connections on this screen here. You can see on the left side of the screen, this is an overpass of, think, say, 42nd Street and I-94 in Fargo. That's connected to 13th and 15th. And then the right side of the screen is an interchange connections that would have ramps that connect to and from I-94. So as we start to think about the trade-offs, and as I mentioned, really, the overall document starts to provide guidance of what the benefits are for each of these things. So we start to look at what an overpass would be is lower upfront costs and long-term costs, and then from the DOT's perspective, better from reducing potential conflicts on Interstate 94. Or from a local perspective, most, including the development community and public, felt like this had, the interchange had a much higher potential to achieving those those commercial goals of development by having access to the interstate. We also find it has better regional travel times from, you know, in to and from the areas up in and around West Fargo. And also, we kind of ended up with similar volumes on I-94 regardless, just a matter of where they got on the interstate. Here's another configuration. Again, we maintained several options in the report so that you have flexibility and agility as you move forward through the planning process. This is a 15th Street connection on the left with an overpass, and on the right, that's an interchange with access to I-94. So as you compare 13th Avenue versus 15th Street, 13th definitely has better connectivity. 13th Avenue is an arterial all the way to the Red River, whereas 15th Street does provide some simplified design, and certainly some preference for those that directly abut that area as well. We also looked at Main Avenue and 26th Street. This is a really critical infrastructure piece as we think about the growth in the northwest part of the community. This is designed to connect into that area while also connecting down it to West 94. This is also an extremely challenging interchange location from a design perspective, because we have five different approaches by 2050 that carry over 20,000 vehicles. So not only do we have Main, but we're trying to connect north via 26th and south via 26th. And so while it does achieve all of those goals, it certainly requires two Cheyenne diversion crossings and a railroad crossing if you were to zoom out and look to the north. So we looked at a lot of different options here, and this was really the one concept that really met all the operational needs. So as we start to think about whether it's 13th Avenue slash 15th Street or 26th Street and Main, there's certainly pros and cons to both. 13th and 15th, it just has better access to West 94. There's a lot more developable land directly adjacent to that. It also provides a bit more logical east-to-west growth patterns. 26th Street and Main, as your first kind of major feature access point, is it does help, kind of balances the need to the northwest plus the West 94, and also the utility connections based on where the available capacity will actually be from the west, and so you're kind of connecting a little closer to the utilities home, but those will have to move all the way through anyways. We also looked at alternative modes of travel, so not just vehicles, but pedestrian, bicycle, and even transit. So you can see on the graphic on the right side of the screen, we've got connectivity both linearly across and adjacent to corridors, but then also across busy intersections. We also looked at ways that we could connect to the Red River diversion greenway vision, which is a pretty ambitious plan with a lot of trails and different multimodal hubs throughout the corridor. We had a pretty intense public engagement process. We engaged more than 100 stakeholders throughout the process, which is, which is good considering there's not a lot that's happening directly inside it, but we have a lot of neighborhoods connected to it. So we had developer roundtables, jurisdictional oversight meetings, property owner meetings, one-on-one meetings with key stakeholders, a public open house, and interactive online website and preference surveys. We also did a lot of marketing to try to get the word out during that process. We had postcards to property owners in the study area, open house marketed, Brooks Harbor Elementary and West Side Elementary email newsletters, social media posts by MetroCog and the city of West Fargo. We punched marketing signs at busy intersections that we knew that the neighborhoods would all cross. neighborhoods would all cross, for example, Cheyenne Streets and 26th Avenue as they exit Brooks Harbor, posters hung in proximity businesses, news coverage, box ad, press release. Overall, from the engagement perspective, we had a variety of different surveys of how much do you support these types of concepts, and if you had multiple options, what would they be? So you can see in the bottom right, that is what we call our criticality index, which is just saying that 100%, you think that's really critical solutions, zero, you don't think it's very useful at all. And as you can see, kind of all of our major improvements all gained a pretty notable support overall, all well above 50%. And then as we start to look at preferences locally in terms of 13th and 15th, is that an interchange or an overpass? The preference locally was an interchange. There were some notable conflicts with the interchange versus overpass. Elmwood Neighborhood was a little concerned about increased traffic volumes, and the North Dakota Department of Transportation was just wanted to reaffirm that there wouldn't be major safety issues with new access points. So ultimately, we ended with two phasing scenarios as we worked through the process and worked through all the stakeholders. On the the two graphics you see on the screen, green would be short-term, yellow would be midterm, and red would be long-term. And there are no specific years tied to this. This is really, you know, left open-ended, recognizing that. On the next slide, you'll see that there are some pretty major cost components, but also just local priorities. And so, but really, the differences in the two scenarios are just designed of what is that key signature feature? On the left side of the screen, you can see that is Cheyenne, that is, sorry, that is 26th and Main interchange at I-94. And then on the right graphic, you can see that the key signature feature is 13th and 15th. And then they both also end at a different point. 13th and 15th on the scenario A is only an overpass. That was requested by North Dakota Department of Transportation as having multiple options open as you move forward. And so there's definitely some advantages and disadvantages that I talked through on some of the previous slides, but both of these are presented as roadmaps that you can start to move towards as you move into the future. No, that's good. Next slide. You're looking ahead, you knew. So finally, kind of the keys to future success, really probably the most important right now is city and NDDOT collaboration. This really was a groundbreaking plan, and then it got the conversation started. But there just needs to be more coordination as you work through that process. This is a long process overall. There are two, for example, interchanges, one occurring, new interchanges, one occurring in Fargo and Grand Forks, and both of those have taken, when they're set and done, they'll be take 10 to 15 years to go from vision to implementation. So it really underscores how much of a process this can be. And so other important elements to this would be just local leadership. DOT does like that these are led, to be proven that they're needed. So thinking about grant money to help fund this, because you can see on the bottom right, that regardless of which solution you take on, there is a significant amount of overall investment. Right-of-way preservation, stakeholder engagement, and then commitment to growth plans are three other elements that are important. The last thing you want to do is have a great infrastructure plan that is, you know, forwarded by the first low-density residential neighborhood that prevents the interchange from happening, or prevents the demand from occurring. So with that, I guess the final recommendation is just get started early. All of these things will take time, but they will help to unlock this area if it's so desired to do so. So with that, I'm happy to open it up for any questions.
Commissioners, questions for the gentleman? Commissioner Zondell?
Can you go back to the two different recommendations? Thank you. Is there a reason in scenario B that you wouldn't follow the DOT in talking about that pedestrian bike overpass on 21st Avenue West? I think of the things that stick out to me, and full disclosure, I live in the Brooks Harbor neighborhood, is adding any additional traffic through that area, especially like essentially routing it right by the school, I think would be very, very problematic in any type of expansion. So in scenario B, was there a reason to keep that existing connection point at 21st Avenue?
It kind of came down to sequencing. You could absolutely follow, and your final solution could be some kind of mix of these two different things. So let's say you you want both interchanges, but you want to start at 26th and Main, that's an option. So I don't want to say that these are concrete options. We looked at this option actually. So on the scenario B, the reason why we kept some of that open is just the idea that you might actually provide relief for Brooks Harbor if you had a new interchange. Could some of those folks that are congested at 26th and Cheyenne, could they actually take a backage road if they're headed west or going some different direction? Again, I think that's something you could absolutely continue to evaluate if you think that that's valuable or not. But that was that was some of the thought process that went into it.
Is there any, when you were doing the traffic patterns from that, do you know where people in that neighborhood are kind of currently draining to? Because basically, if they drained and they were heading west, is the thought that they would hop on the interchange at 13th Avenue then as opposed to catching a connection at Cheyenne and 94? Is that kind of the?
That's kind of the hypothesis, right? And we could kind of track it. We know they're going to the interchange, right? I mean, and you can see as you come out.
That feels like I'm not a traffic engineer.
Right, yeah. You don't have to be a traffic engineer to realize that nobody wants to be on that north lane, right? I mean, so everyone's trying to get onto the interstate access one way or the other. So there definitely is less traffic to the west, but I think even if I lived in the northwest part of Brooks Harbor neighborhood, I might think about taking that route if it was there and it was pretty easy to get to, or maybe if I'm coming off. But again, that's hard to say perfectly how many folks would use each of those.
And then can you remind me, how far is the current DOT recommendation of having interchanges? And if we select one first, does that limit our ability? So if we pick, for example, 13th Avenue, 15th Street first, are we able to also do one on Main Avenue, 26th, or vice versa? I guess if we pick the one on 26th, how does that affect our ability to do an interchange at 38th Street or at 13th Avenue, 15th Street?
DOT is definitely least comfortable with 13th and 15th because it is a new access. That is the one advantage of the Main Avenue is there's already access onto the interstate. Certainly, we're making it more complicated by adding access north and south, but that exists. And so there's probably a few less procedural barriers to go through that. The process to get interchange approved is pretty arduous, and it takes a lot of technical analysis. And so while they didn't say, no, you can't do that, they definitely told us, you haven't proved enough to prove that you can't make it work by having just one of these other locations. And so while I don't think picking one precludes you from the other, I definitely think it delays significantly, you know, what's gonna happen later. So when we think about one of these interchanges, if it takes 10 years to build, think of the next one as 25 years to even start to think about it. So there really is a sequencing element that will probably start to shape what that land use looks like based on where you pick it.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions for Mr. Britner? All right, thank you. Mr. Funzler?
Thank you.
All right. I have a question for maybe Mr. Hanson or Mr. Wallace. In any of these discussions and these plans, has there been any discussion with the Metro Flood Diversion Authority with regarding to the Cheyenne mitigation that's coming in '27, '28?
Is the Cheyenne mitigation, which is as far as taking the gates?
As far as crying to cross the West Fargo diversion?
Yeah, so the, there has not, but with the new FM diversion going live, it's gonna really throttle back the flows in the Cheyenne diversion. So we're not talking major bridges at that point in time. We're talking more box culverts. And we believe with the number of existing crossings that are already there, that it should be, although as Mr. Britner said, things are always complicated with doing that, but it's very doable for us to expect that we would be able to cross both, for example, the 26th Street interchange option, that we would have two crossings of the Cheyenne diversion. I believe that that would not be a hurdle that would be insurmountable. I think that would be very doable.
With the attempt to try and get it from Corps of Engineers to the Metro Flood Diversion Authority, would we still require permits from the Corps of Engineers for box culverts?
Yes, it's still considered a bridge through the, we definitely would need all of those permits. But again, I think those permits are very achievable, especially with the lower flows that we're gonna see in the in the Cheyenne diversion.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else? Any questions? Please continue. If you have anything else.
Well, that is really all that we have. And like Aaron mentioned, we are just seeking a resolution of support for this, just to make it more official, and then that can be your guidebook going forward. Anything else I missed, Aaron?
Okay.
All right.
I'm
Commissioners?
Move we approve the West 94 area transportation plan, presentation and approval?
Resolution.
Resolution.
Of approval. Thank you, Commissioner Zondell. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, seconds. We have a motion and a second to approve the West 94 area transportation plan and and plan approval and a letter of support. Is there any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four is project number 6060, Rivers Bend Multi-Use Path and Pedestrian Bridge. We're gonna call on Mr. Dan Hanson, Senior Director of Community and Development. The purpose of discussion is to direct and approve an engineer's report. I'd like to call on Commissioner Zondell before we start.
I am going to recuse myself from this vote.
Madam Secretary, please let the record show that Amy Zondell is, Commissioner Amy Zondell is recusing herself from item number four. Mr. Hanson, good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis and Commissioners. Before you is an engineer's report for project number 6060, the Rivers Bend Multi-Use Path and Pedestrian Bridge that we've heard from the local community earlier this evening. Just wanted to take us through, I've seen a lot of the emails, a lot of the correspondence with it, so I hopefully presented in this packet a little bit of a timeline of how this, where this project is at as far as the budget goes and things of that nature, too. So one of the questions that has come up is the amount of federal funding that we received for the project. So wanted to touch base on that. Originally, in fall of 2023, in November of 2023, we were approved to submit for funding for this project. And at that time, it was called out to be submitted as TA funding, Transportation Alternative Grant Funding. There was another opportunity for submittal for funding, and that's through the Carbon Reduction Program, which is the CRP program. And ultimately, it was the CRP program that awarded the city of West Fargo $848,798, which was 80% of the estimated cost during the planning of the project back in 2023. And the the thing with the funds that were appropriated towards this project or given to the city of West Fargo towards this project is that those funds were from the Carbon Reduction Program based off of the 2027 allotment that was going to be created, and that is an amount that was that was planned for. However, it has, that had not been funded yet and still currently hasn't been funded. It still needs to be funded through an upcoming legislative session. There's a lot of talk that because it's Carbon Reduction Program, that the current administration likely might get away with those type of funds. So the reason that the grant dropped from the $848,798 to $746,536 was that the $746,536 was from the Carbon Reduction Program's 2026 allotment, which is funded. So that was a guaranteed source of funds. So some of the questions as far as why did the grant dollars depreciate from what was originally presented is, that's the case, it was going from something that was unfunded to and planned for to something that was funded and planned for. The other thing is, you know, we had a public informational meeting in April, and the consultant had on that presentation the dollar amount of $1,070,000. That was the original construction estimate that was put together by our transportation engineer at the time when we applied for the original grant in 2023. In April, they were midway through the design. There was no design estimate, engineer's estimate that had been prepared yet. So the number that they had put up on that display at that meeting was just the construction dollars only. Back in November of 2024, I brought this project in front of the commission, and the dollar amount that I had presented to the commission at that time was $1,391,000, so just shy of $1.4 million, which included that original construction cost estimate plus an estimated 30% soft cost estimate. After getting through design, it was actually in late October, just prior to our October 30th public informational meeting, when the consultant gave us more of a design, because they're because they're basically done with the design now, they were able to give us a more accurate, up-to-date estimate for what they figured that the project would cost, which was $1.31 million, I believe. And if you add in the 10% contingencies to that and the soft cost, that's what gets us to the current total estimated cost that was presented at the October 30th public informational meeting, which was the amount of $1,873,765. We still do have the CRP grant fund secured in the amount of $746,536, which would leave a city share of $1,127,229. Now, there are some opportunities to still secure additional grants towards the project, but as I stated, nothing is, nothing is for sure or secured until it has been granted by those entities, MetroCog, through whatever program that we're able to secure some funds. So planning on not getting that, but hoping to get that if the project were to proceed, that basically, I wanted to cover that piece of the information because there was also a cost of why did the cost of the project jump between presentations? And it was that the original presentation in April was based solely off of the estimated construction costs by the original transportation engineer. So hopefully, that clears up a little bit of the questions as far as why have the project costs changed? Tonight before you is just the engineer's report that is reflective of the most updated costs that we do have. This does not mean that the project is moving forward. It's accepting the report, but the anticipation would be if the report is accepted and the project is moving forward, our next step is to submit the project, the signed final design to the Corps for those permits that we need to cross the river. Those those permits are not reviewed until they receive a final designed set of plans. So HDR, the consultant, they have basically finished the design, and if we did decide to move forward with the project, the next step would be to submit for those permits. That can take up to six months. If it goes sooner than that, there is a chance that it could bid out in late spring. If not, if we aren't able to secure those permits in time, it would have to be likely in October 26, bid letting for a 2027 construction project. Obviously, if we are able to bid it out in the springtime, it would be a 2026 project. So with that, I would entertain any questions.
Questions for Mr. Hanson? Could you touch on the environmental aspect of it with all the concerns that the the public has had with regard to habitat and that type of thing?
Yeah, absolutely.
There wasn't environmental done? Is that correct?
Yeah, part of the whole process of getting the federal funds and things, there was environmental work that was done for it. Originally, the path had considered being right on the edge of the park district's property, on the northern edge of their property. But if you, if we were to have placed it there, basically, it would have been clearcutting the outside swath of trees. It was upon a field review, it was discovered that there's basically a fairly cleared-out area through those trees, where from the initial thought of the design being right along the park district's property line, to move it inside the trees, and in doing so, actually reduce the amount of trees being taken by, according to HDR, almost 100 trees, were reduced from that original design to actually moving it within the, within the trees into that clearing. There was a wildlife biologist that did go out and and inventory the site for any type of nesting. There were no eagles' nests reported back to me from that. They did find some squirrels' nests and things of that nature. And also, as it was mentioned before, right before the project begins, before that clearcutting begins, the wildlife biologist would need to go out there and inventory the site again, just to make sure that there is no nesting going on. And she was correct that if there is nesting going on, it does delay the project or you need to move the project. You are allowed to do a project in a nesting area if they're not nesting at the time. So the intent, especially with there being no eagles' nests or those type of nests, exists So, the intent, especially with there being no eagles' nests or those type of nests existing today, would be to proceed with the plan as proposed. And obviously, if we did find that there was challenges such as nesting birds at the time of, right before we start the project, the construction of the project, we would have to pivot and either delay or move the project as well, as she stated.
Thank you. One of the folks that spoke today was, apparently, she's, she's counted the amount, the number of trees that have been marked. I was on site this morning, as you well know, to make sure that I understood exact, direct how the path was going to be built. Is that an accurate number, 150, 160 trees?
I honestly, I don't know the actual number. I couldn't speak to that.
Right. Commissioners, any other questions, comments? Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah. Yeah, I think I'm going to make the motion to deny the engineer's report and to stop work on this project.
Do I have a motion?
That's a motion.
And I have a second. I have a motion and a second on project number 6060, Rivers Bend Multi-Use Path and Pedestrian Bridge, to direct and approve the engineer's report. And the motion is to deny the engineer's report and to stop work on the project. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of denying the engineer's report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried on a three to one vote. Again, Commissioner Zondal is recusing herself on this. Moving on, item number five. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Item number five is Improvement District Number 3008, Meadow Ridge Development Reconstruction Phase One. We call on Jerry Wallace, the city engineer for the City of West Fargo, is to approve and amend the engineer's report. Mr. Wallace, good evening and welcome.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Commission President. That was a difficult decision you had to make there, so I'll try to be respectful with your time here tonight. I'm here before you for Improvement District Number-
Mr. Wallace, would you take just a minute?
Oh, yes, sir.
I think some of our friends that come this evening are going to exit. Thank you. Thank you. Please continue.
Yes, sir. Again, I'm here before you to present Improvement District Number 3008. Excuse me. This is a, really boils down to, you know, we have several areas of the core area where we can acknowledge they're in tough shape. You know, this one in particular, we're looking at the Meadow Ridge, portions of the Meadow Ridge neighborhood and looking at moving forward with a reconstructive effort. The action I'm looking for tonight, pending your approval, would be to approve the, an amended engineer's report. Essentially, what we're looking at in this situation, we've launched in at a previous meeting, we were directed to begin preparing plans and specifications. We've dove into that effort, and one of the things that became apparent was that there is Meadow Ridge Court essentially is in a similar condition to a lot of the rest of the project area, and they will be impacted by the project for various reasons. Primarily, the intersection that they're going to be using to get in and out of the court there is going to need to be improved and impacted by the construction. Because of that, the age of the water main that sits in the, in the court and the condition of the street, we're here tonight, I guess, to recommend that, you know, that court be added to the project. We're in a unique position where we're able to take advantage of some state grants potentially and low-interest loans. And so, we're confident, I guess, that that's the right decision that we'd be comfortable recommending and moving forward with. On that note, in your packet here is the amended engineer's report, draft benefit methodology, and the associated resolution should you decide to proceed with this amendment. And again, the staff recommendation would be to approve the amended engineer's report. There will be also, if we do continue to proceed, a public meeting that we have scheduled for December 3rd, and I encourage anyone who would like to, to attend that. But again, with that being said, we're looking for approval of the amended engineer's report, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Wallace? Commissioner Zondal?
I'm so sorry, not a traffic engineer, is there to discuss later? Can you clarify by adding that court, were those people already getting special assessed? So, the special assessment district didn't change at all? We don't have to do anything different with that?
That's correct, Commissioner.
And we are adding what in that court specifically? Just redoing the pipe that's going?
We would be looking at full reconstruct. So, the sanitary sewer, the water main, we would be adding storm sewer because right now there is no storm sewer. That was another thing that kind of spurred this discussion is that in order to tie in storm sewer, it'd be most beneficial to be doing it under this project. And yeah, essentially, everything, street, sewer, water, all that.
So, to clarify, they were in the assessment district originally because the adjacent roadways would have been their way out of the neighborhood?
They were in the district solely because we just created a larger district than the project footprint. And traditionally, we've done that just because of oddities like this that can come up over the, the project development process. There, there by no means is any intention of assessing anyone who's not going to be seeing direct benefit from the footprint of the project area. But that's essentially what brings us here tonight.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else? All right. Move to approve. Commissioner Anderson moves to improve, to approve the Improvement District Number 3008, Meadow Ridge Development Reconstruction, and approve the amended engineer's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Jorgensen, seconds. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Improvement District Number 3008, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you.
Item number six is also yours. That's an Improvement District Number 3009, First Avenue East Reconstruction, Cheyenne Street to Fourth Street East, conducting the determination of protest sufficiency and approving associated resolution. Mr. Wallace?
Thank you again, Mr. Commission President and Commissioners. Really quick, I'm here before you again tonight, Improvement District Number 3009. This is going to be looking at First Avenue portion from Cheyenne Street over to Fourth, and we're essentially looking at something similar. The infrastructure's in pretty tough shape. We're looking at bringing forward neighborhood reconstruction for the area. We've launched into the process again of, we're, we've been directed to prepare plans and specifications. We're proceeding with that. And some of our legal requirements here are essentially conducting the determination of protest sufficiency in regard to our resolution of necessity and then approving that associated resolution. Multiple notices were published in the forum in regard to our legal obligations there. The 30-day period for that protest period has come to an end. We did actually receive one letter that was probably, call it maybe a little misconstrued. They, they sent a letter in that where they were protesting the amount of their special assessment. They were not by any means protesting the need for the project. I can certainly share that with, with anyone who would like to see it, but that was the crux of that letter, and we're actually working with that resident, you know, to address their concerns. If we do proceed and continue on, we are also planning a public meeting on December 8th. And once again, I would invite anyone who would love, who would, who would like to attend to, to attend that. With all that being said, we have the affidavit and publication in your packet here, the mailer that was actually sent to the property owners, just letting them know that this, this public hearing was coming up, and the associated resolution of insufficient protest should you choose to proceed. Staff recommendation again is to conduct the determination of protest sufficiency and approve that associated resolution. And again, with that, I'm available for, for any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Wallace?
I move we approve.
Commissioner Zondal moves to approve the Improvement District Number 3009 and to conduct a determination of protest sufficiency and approve, approve the associated resolution of necessity, I would assume. Is that right?
Yes, sir. Second.
I have a second. We have a motion and a second to approve, to approve Improvement District 3009. From First Avenue East, or, excuse me, from Cheyenne Street to Fourth Avenue East. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. We move on to item number seven. Number seven is to authorize the RFP, request for proposal for a new ERP system. We're going to call on Mr. Willie Galendo, our Finance Director for the City of West Fargo. Good evening and welcome.
Evening Commissioners and Commissioner President. It's pretty amazing that a year has gone by, and tomorrow will be two months since I first started working here for the City of West Fargo back in September of 18, 2024. And in that timeframe, I've had an opportunity to observe and evaluate our current ERP software system. I've also been able to obtain feedback from team members of the Finance Department and colleagues from other departments as well on propositions for looking at modules and software that are included but are not limited to procurement and capital improvement planning software. So, in that timeframe, all that data that has been collected and the feedback that I received has culminated into the documents that I present before you tonight. With this said, I request and seek authorization from you to proceed with publishing the request for proposal to bid out for a new ERP software, and I also stand before you to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Galendo? Could you move the, move that up a little, the schedule of events? Thank you. For the public to see that? May I ask, please, who your committee was that did this review?
We're actually going to be developing an evaluation committee, and the committee will be involving the Commissioner and the Commissioners that does the primary and the secondary portfolio. In this particular case, it would be you as the Mayor and Robin Anderson, Commissioner. And along with that, we'd have other team members, that include myself, a member of Public Works, and a member of Engineering Department. So, those will be the members of the evaluation process and Nick Lee, who is the Senior Director for Administrative Services.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Galendo?
Ready to get signed up for another committee, you two? Yeah. I move we approve.
Commissioner Zondal moves to approve the authorization of the RFP for a new ERP system as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Jorgensen, seconds. We have a motion and a second to authorize the RFP for the new ERP system, request for proposal for our new financials, software. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Galendo.
Thank you.
Item number eight is policies. Call on Dustin Scott, City Administrator. We have five items this evening. The city employee policies for sick leave, personal leave, vacation leave, overtime and compensation time, and holidays. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis and Commissioners. As Mayor Dardis just said, we've got five policies. We are continuing our efforts to update all of our city policies. The five before you tonight are updates to what is currently in our handbook. There is a high-level summary of proposed changes from our 2025 employee handbook to what will be implemented in Lexi Poll. So, again, these are policies relating to leave, overtime, and our holidays. With that, I would stand for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Scott? Commissioner Zondal?
It's me. The only question that I had was on the use of vacation leave. It would be on page three, Emily, and then for 20.7, use of vacation leave. I noticed that they must submit something at least two weeks before the requested leave date, and there doesn't really seem to be any flexibility with that. Is there a reason, or I guess, is that current practice? Is that practice changing?
Well, that's an excellent question, Commissioner. I will have to look into that a little further. I'm not 100% sure if that language is taken from our 25 handbook, but we can certainly look into that, and if it is too rigid, should the commission want us to add some flexibility there, we can certainly do that. I'd say in common practice, yes, we would be certainly more flexible with our staff at the discretion of our department heads and supervisors.
Okay.
So, we can certainly look to amend that language just to match the, the practical practice.
And then my other question, and this could be because it's in a different policy somewhere else that we're not viewing, but on page four, Emily, when it says exempt employees who work four or more hours in, in a workday will be considered to have worked the full day, does it matter where they work from? So, for example, are they allowed to work virtually? Do they have to be physically in our space? Do we have a separate work-from-home policy, or I guess?
Yeah. Again, thank you for the question. So, predominantly, yes, they are working from the office, but there are special considerations by which they would be allowed to work at home. Again, that is left up to discretion of department heads, given the nature and functionality of their position. Not all positions, in fact, most positions would not qualify for that, but there are positions that are productive, whether they're attending a conference or working from home. There are some circumstances where they are not accumulating those four hours in the office.
And then my other question, you brought up conferences, specifically, one of the things that came to mind was travel. So, if they're not physically in the office, but they are traveling that day, does that count?
Again, there can be different circumstances. Yep, these things, and that's where we generally try to provide some flexibility within these policies. We rely on our department heads and our supervisors to exercise their judgment and ensure that we are really not only complying with the policies, but doing what is, you know, common or good practice.
And then the very last thing that we talked about as far as giving credit within a year of separation from the city, is that what we're currently doing in practice? So, Emily, if you went all the way down the last sentence, so an employee who returns to the service of the city within one year of separation will be given credit for prior service, is that what we're currently doing, or is that?
Yes, yes, I believe so. Again, I'd have to confirm the actual language in the 2025 handbook, but I believe that's current practice.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Again, I can follow up with a confirmation after looking into that.
Anyone else? We are looking for a motion to approve. Oh, motion to approve. Commissioner Jorgensen moves to approve the Lexi Poll policies. Commissioner Jorgensen moves to approve the Lexi Poll policies, item number 417, 419, 420, 422, and 433. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Zundell, seconds. We have a motion and a second to approve these policies as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number nine is the city administrators' report. Mr. Scott.
Thank you again, Commission President Dardis and Commissioners. Really just have one update for you, one staff update. We have started the search for a new director of human resources. We are accepting applications through mid-December with interviews planned for the early part of January. We're already seeing strong interest in just the last 10 days of posting the position and excited to see that trend continue. Nick and our HR team are doing an excellent job handling some additional responsibilities to keep our HR functions operating smoothly for staff. So kudos to them. Again, our staff are our most critical assets, so we are doing everything we can do to ensure that there's no disruption in HR services for them. So that's really all the updates I have for you and would stand for any questions you have.
Questions for Mr. Scott? Thank you.
Thank you.
All correspondence has been distributed or either in your mailboxes or given to you this evening at your desk. Does any commissioner have any non-agenda item that they'd like to bring forward at this time? Madam Secretary, Emily, I would request that the the schedules for that Mr. Wallace had talked about his meetings in December, that we as a commission get a notification for those meetings with the public. If we can make yourselves available, it'd be nice for us to be there as well. And also, when the final schedule comes through with regarding to the RFP, those of us that are involved in that discussion, it'd be nice to have a schedule reminder. Anything else, non-agenda, Commissioners? Any department head have anything for us this evening? Commissioner Jorgensen.
Motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Zundell.
Second.
We stand adjourned.